He's ready. Everybody ready?
Ready.
I'm ready. A big duty for the day here. It's September 4th. Work session, 10:00 AM. All members present?
John, would you mind coming up here for a minute? The other day I get a resolution to settle out. Do you want to shut that door, Joe, please? I don't even if this is executive session on that.
I don't know what it's about.
That $2,500 tree fee.
That would be executive session because of litigation matter and it's an agreement. It's above the property, but it results in a litigation.
Fourth, that's like you said too. It's hard to believe it's September already.
I just want one note to take away with you that we need to talk at some point what we're going to do with sidewalks. From 2004 to 2012, and that's not completed, I assume, not completed yet, we spent $16 million specifically on sidewalks. 16 million over eight years, with the 16 maybe being 17. It's truly unsustainable. So we have to come up with some form of a plan, how to deal with it instead of just throwing millions of dollars each year. Because once it's over, it begins again. Okay, so just keep that in mind and maybe you discuss amongst yourselves what you think we might do, okay? John?
Yes.
The other day I got the resolution that says $2,500.
That was his.
That's on Cox. That's executive session.
Yeah, okay. That was on Cox. And of course, we have, what about this old docking? Is that also executive session?
Um.
That's a contract?
That's, it's a contract. We have a concession here, as I would say, yes, executive session.
Another executive session matter? You all have the letter from the Lake Grove Village?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know if that, was that executive?
No.
For me personally, that development proposal was on the town of Smithtown's side and their property, correct?
Come on Frank, you might as well discuss this. We got a copy of it.
My question is, with the village of, for the town attorney, the village of Lake Grove, as long as they are well aware of the project, why would we stop on our end because they're asking us to? I don't quite understand. Why not just proceed and then if the village has any objections, they can raise it on their own?
I think before he answers, why don't you put in context that people watching just don't know what that's about?
Well, this is a proposal for a freestanding restaurant on the Smith Haven Mall property. And apparently, it's gone through the entire process and now it's being stalled out at this present time because there's an objection from the mayor of the village of Lake Grove. My question is, I don't understand, if we went through our procedures and it's acceptable to us, why we would be holding up on that development on the Smithtown property just because they have a concern, let them raise their own concerns. It's on the Smithtown side of the mall. I mean, my point is, does the village of Lake Grove, when they go to develop something, are they gonna hold off and not develop it until such time as the town approves it?
One of the things you should be aware of is that, this is the mall, it's a commercial center.
Correct.
It's gotta go to the planning board for site plan, it's set forth in the code.
Correct.
So that is, I understand, tomorrow, so that's one thing. Frank and I had had discussions about that. The question is, should the site plan process with town be held up because of what the village of Lake Grove might require? And as I had discussed with Frank, my impression is, and I think, and I know I'm correct, is that we shouldn't hold it up. If there's any approvals that have to be obtained by the applicant in the village of Lake Grove, it's their responsibility.
Correct.
The question is, ultimately, you can't get a building permit without site plan approval, without health department approval. And as you know, the village of Lake Grove, sewage treatment plant is in the village of Lake Grove.
Correct.
It's owned by Simon and monitored or overseen by the county health department. So, what I've discussed with Frank is, first, the town board can approve the site plan. Second, the applicant knows that to go to the village of Lake Grove and take care of whatever they might have to do with respect to if they're gonna expand the facility, they have to get health department approval to do that. And the building department's not gonna issue a building permit until they have everything in place. So, I have said, and I was told.
Our building department?
Correct. So, because the last, the last step is a building permit issuing, so nothing, the building permit cannot be issued until they have all their ducks in order, which means any approvals in the village of Lake Grove. But I don't want the town of Smithtown to start setting up a policy which was what it would be, to say, we're gonna sit on this or make it a condition that you have to get the village of approvals. That's kinda like saying, put in conditions, you comply with all applicable provisions of the town or the town code. You're obligated to do that.
Right. And that's my point. That's exactly to the point. And the village of Lake Grove certainly can appear at that planning board here.
And they had the opportunity, they were noticed and?
Correct.
I think they did.
Well, could I give a little point on this? I think it's very important. When we did the last expansion, which was the Cheesecake Factory, the Dicks and all of those, that was an integral part of the review process. In other words, the village of Lake Grove objected to that development that was occurring because they felt that the sewage treatment plant at that particular time could not handle that particular arrangement. What we did was work with the village and asked the applicant to make sure, before we approved all of those developments, that they had satisfied the villages to the capacity of their sewage treatment plant in terms of what they could offer. Now, there are two separate issues with regard to the Bahama Breeze. One is regard to what's on our side, which is the waiver of the parking. And that, what the town attorney and I are basically in agreement on, is that's entirely within the town of Smithtown's jurisdiction. What I don't want to happen is what we go through and get an approval on this and then the village decides that they are not going to connect on to their sewage treatment plant. What I had recommended, which was, I recommended the last time was, before we get this approval, and I had asked the applicant before they submitted their site plan, application to do this, was make sure you get approval from the village to, that you're allowed to expand onto that sewage treatment plant. Otherwise, I don't see why, you know, we should have a conflict between two jurisdictions. Now, the applicant is maintaining, and it's correct, that Suffolk County Health Department determines what the capacity is of the plant. But the village of Lake Grove maintains the CO over that particular plant. And I think they are, from my discussions with the chairman of the planning board and the mayor of the village, was they feel very strongly that that sewage treatment plant cannot handle whatever capacity it is. And I think the, Simon, and they signed an agreement with, we have an agreement in the file, with the village of Lake Grove, that they would take care of any sewage treatment plant, and they admitted that there was problems. So what I'm saying is, is that I have no problem in improving the Bahama Breeze from the town's point, but that does not mean that we're negating that they have to get approval from the village.
They don't get. They don't commit under the board of health?
But that's the thing, and this is.
What way, what's the question here?
The question is, I'm sorry, the question is, should the town board impose a condition on a site plan that says you have to get village of Lake Grove approval?
Absolutely no.
And I say, I say the law doesn't support that.
Okay.
And we always worked in cooperation with all surrounding municipalities. It seems to me to do that is something that you don't wanna get involved in doing. And I wasn't here when it happened. If it happened prior to my tenure here, I would never have recommended it. I also think what you have to mindful of is, the village of Lake Grove issues a building permit, so if they're gonna expand the plant, the village of Lake Grove oversees that. The applicant and Simon have to satisfy the village of Lake Grove if they're gonna get a building permit.
And Suffolk County Board of Health.
And the Suffolk County Board of Health, so.
Who's the 10-ton monster?
We are just saying, as far as the town of Smithtown is concerned, your site plan is acceptable, the site plan is gonna be approved, but you know you have other responsibilities. But don't, I don't think we should put that, which again, is an obvious condition, into the site plan, that you have to get village of Lake Grove.
Okay.
It just sets a bad.
If you don't put it in as a condition, and the town board approves the site plan, obviously Simon, is that the company Simon?
Yes.
Has to get permission from the village to enter into this sewage treatment plant.
Even more, the Suffolk County Board of Health.
So, isn't the ball in, in Lake Grove's court?
We had done, and I think this is a question of both etiquette, of political etiquette and policy, is we have worked with the village in the past. They originally turned down the request for the Cheesecake Factory and the restaurants that are located in the town of Smithtown. We worked with the village to get those approval and they reversed themselves.
How quick would they have been approved if they were on the village's side? Just curious.
The next day.
Look, what I'm saying is.
Come on, let's be real here.
Look, this is your, I'm advising you, this is your decision, but I think what we have done before in the past is worked with the village. We will have other changes that'll be done in the mall. I mean, you know, we look forward to working together. It's a joint site and it's their sewage treatment, it's our, we're the ones that are putting the restaurant on our side. I think it is a mutual site of, one that we would work together on, because the mall is split between us. There's nothing that says that there's a Smithtown portion and a village portion, it's a split site. So I believe that, you know, for, that it is prudent, or not necessarily prudent, that it is something that the town has done in the past, that we should work together with the village of Lake Grove. I think if we're going to approve things and then let them go off on their own, I think we're gonna create problems in the future.
Okay, I'm still not, you gotta forgive me here. If you put, if you don't put the condition on, which the town attorney is recommending you don't do, that means the site plan has been approved by the Smithtown Town Board.
That's correct.
The restaurant company or Simon has to get over a large hump. They have to get approval from Lake Grove to, and Suffolk County to get into their sewage treatment plant. So I don't, you ever made a point for me, why it's deleterious to put in?
The other thing I might answer, because I don't think if you or any of the board members have gotten any correspondence from the village of, the mayor of the village of Lake Grove.
Just got it today.
But it just doesn't, I mean, again, I think you're unnecessarily complicating the process as far as town is concerned.
So, but let him answer. If, so you don't put the condition in that they need approval, town board adopts that plan, they still have to go and get approval from the village, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, then why are we getting involved?
Because, well.
You mean you wanna show them good faith?
Yes.
Okay.
Our law doesn't say show good faith though. Our law is our law.
But we have done this, what I'm getting at, is that in the past, when we did the expansion that we did with the Cheesecake Factory and California Pizza and all of those, the original approval from the village was a denial. We worked with the village, and Simon worked with the village, to correct all the sewage problems that they had, and then they signed off and we got the Cheesecake Factory and all the other improvements that we did. I don't think, I think that was a very cooperative and workable solution that we had in the past. I think by telling the village, we're no longer involved in their sewage treatment, I'm going to have problems with future changes to our side of the mall. Because the village is going to probably feel that they're, we're not working with them anymore.
Well, Frank, I agree with you. The last sentence of the letter from the mayor, please consider my request that any new development at the Smith Haven Mall be approved by both municipalities before any work commence on any such project. Which would lead me to believe that our destiny lies in their hands. If they don't want something developed on the Smithtown side so we can get the tax ratables and create construction jobs and jobs in that facility, they simply say, we don't like it, and ergo, doesn't get developed. Or the developer is stalled out so long he walks. I don't think that's fair for the village to impose that on Smithtown. It's just dumb.
Well.
And I say that only because, as Mr. Zolmo said, their protections are, site plans approved for, in this case, Bahama Breeze, they now, Simon and the Bahama Breeze applicant has to go before Suffolk County Board of Health and the village. And if the Suffolk County Board of Health says no, there is the capacity and it will work well, well then it's up to the village of Lake Grove to say, well, we disagree with the Board of Health. I mean, that's their.
And the other thing is, again, there's no legal requirement to do that, but if the village of Lake Grove feels so outraged, the town is gonna do something that's pretty much routine, they have the remedy of going to court, getting restraining law if they feel it's gonna affect them, or going down the line if they wanna do something.
But John, that's not the issue. The issue that Frank is raising is that if the town board is going to approve the site plan, and we make a condition that they have to have approval of Lake Grove Village Board.
But it's already there, they have to.
Okay, so my question is, if you do that, it doesn't make the process any different, Frank. They still have to go get it.
Well, what the difference is, is that, the way we have approached the Smith Haven Mall since the day it was built, has been a joint review by both villages. When they put, decided to put on their additions on to Macy's and all the improvements to the food court that was done on their sides, we reviewed those site plans and we also passed on those site plans. So we have reviewed them, you know, what's going on, a joint review on that particular process. We've always treated this mall as a joint review, because it's split between the two jurisdictions. If we're gonna split them and say, we're gonna go off on our own and improve ours, which is a policy decision of the board, and yes, you could do that, okay, I feel that this is separating us from future approvals. And I think what we're, it's gonna jeopardize, you know, the working relationship we've had with the village in the past. We were able to convince the village to, or work with the village, and getting the other improvements done that they originally did not want to do. And we got some very big development out of it. I think what the village is upset about is that nobody checked with them beforehand, which we asked the applicant to do, to make sure you had sewage treatment approval before you submit your application. And they didn't do that.
Here's a letter here to the, from Simon emphasizing what they will do for the village.
That's the old one.
That's October 3rd, 2005.
Yeah.
Saying it would give them all kinds of things.
Well, yes, because they were, there were problems with regard to the sewage treatment facility at the time, and they had to commit to like $600,000 worth of improvements. Once they committed, we got a resolution from the village of Lake Grove and we passed on the improvements that we have now. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Supervisor, which is basically, if we say nothing, they still have to get approval from the village of Lake Grove.
Right.
That's basically it.
Right.
And if that's what the town board wants, fine, we're gonna do it that way. It's not my recommendation. My recommendation is to go for the joint review. And I feel we've done that before in the past, and we have other centers, like the shopping center in Comac, which is split between the town of Huntington and us, which we do joint reviews on, which means that both municipalities sign off on this, simultaneously on these particular sites.
On the site plan.
On the site plans, yes. And that's.
They don't even sign off on those box stores? They sued us twice in court.
No, but that's in the town.
They tried to prevent that whole piece of development.
No, I agree with you on that, but that's entirely within.
Hello.
If we were gonna make nice with Huntington, we wouldn't have the tax ratables coming in from that entire property.
No, no. Those, what I'm talking about is sites that are split between the towns. And the shopping center I'm talking about is the one over on Jerkwood Turnpike that's split between the town where Comac Road is. Comac Road, that shopping center is half in the town of Smithtown, half in the town of Huntington. When we have a situation like that, that's a joint review. When it comes down to what's down on Crooked Hill Road, that's 100% in the town of Smithtown, that's our jurisdiction. And I have no problem with that. And I agree with you that that was incredibly silly with regard to the lawsuits that are there.
I agree.
But what I look at the other side of town is, we have the village of Lake Grove, we've worked very well with them in the past, and in the, what the, I think, in my own judgment, to have a cooperative working relationship with another municipality on a very large site that we have is desirable.
I don't understand why, town of Smithtown, village of Lake Grove, why are we getting involved in Board of Health job? We shouldn't be in the waste of Board of Management business. TDRs, any of that stuff. That's Suffolk County Board of Health. So all we're doing is creating another layer of government to stall business off in the town.
If the capacity is approved by the Board of Health, maybe I'm wrong, then what would be, if that's shown that we do have the capacity and Simon Properties is gonna, of course, abide by that county Board of Health requirement, what would the village, what would be their objection then? What else is there? Object to what?
On the right side of the line.
We don't want it on your side. I don't know.
Let me, I think, you're right. I think, I don't know what the objection will be, but town, Smithtown puts the condition that they need approval from the village of Lake Grove.
Okay.
And it's so notified, everybody, we're all complacent here. What happens if the village says no?
That's the point. It's their sewage treatment plant.
And they can say no.
Yes, that's correct.
With or without our condition.
They have the CO on the building, and if they decide that that particular plant is not operating to their capacity, just like if the plant was on the town of Smithtown side.
Wait, John, let's stay with my question. The condition goes on.
Mm-hmm.
And the site plan approval is pending, village of Lake Grove says, no, we do not want the hookup.
Correct.
It's over.
Unless you find another hookup.
Unless they do.
Yes, unless Simon does.
So I'm not so sure why the condition is so important, if they got the right of refusal to begin with.
It's a question, and again, it's not necessary, is what, I agree with you.
Oh, it's not necessary.
You're saying it's a matter of courtesy.
That's correct.
I don't see where a town lawyer would say courtesy.
As I understand, John, you said you would not, if you had been here in the past, gone along with.
I mean, while I like, and I recognize the need to cooperate with surrounding municipalities, I don't think you wanna get involved in putting that on something that is completely autonomous to the town of Smithtown. I don't think you wanna put that on there, because today it's a site plan issue, you need to build approval of the village of Lake Grove. Going forward, it could be something else that has a little more significance. You're setting a bad precedent. Again, the applicant, the risk falls to the applicant. It's their responsibility to get these approvals to hook up this sewage treatment plant, expand this sewage treatment plant. And if, as Frank said, he informed that they should deal with the village of Lake Grove, if they haven't done that, that's their risk and that's their responsibility. And I think there was a Board of Zone Appeals application heard on this case, I believe, and the village of Lake Grove has had an opportunity to deal with issues that would affect them, such as parking or those type of things.
Did they appear at that?
Not, I'm aware of.
Yes, they did.
Did they?
Yes, they did. The mayor.
I think, Eddie, to your point, he's saying it's just a matter of courtesy, because ultimately, they have the say whether the hookup is made or not made up.
I think we depend on the Suffolk County Board of Health to make that decision, not a village of Lake Grove.
The other thing to keep in mind is, this is, you know, you look at the Smith Haven Mall, it's, the building itself physically is split, half between the town of Smithtown, half between the village of Lake Grove. This is not the last development that is going to occur there. I mean, in terms of how we work with the village, it should be a long-term arrangement. And if, in my judgment, if we're, or we're saying every man for himself on this particular site is not the best approach towards working with another municipality, and if we're gonna come up with those sewage treatment issues, I like to at least have a record, I personally, as a planner, this is, I recognize the board may disagree with me, but I like to at least have a track record where we work with the village on these things, rather than just say, well, no, it's on ours, we'll take ours and you take care of yours. I think it's, you know, you say it's courtesy, yeah, I think it is that, Mr. Bob, that, I think that when you are working cooperatively with another municipality, why get them upset? When it comes to Huntington and the Walmart and other things, I think they were way off base on that particular one, telling the town of Smithtown what they can do in terms of that particular site. It was our decision.
But we, we are really not sort of telling them, this is the way it's gonna be. We say, we've taken care of our side of it, the rest is in your hands.
Yes.
That's all.
Doesn't Lake Grove receive tax ratables on their part of those buildings?
Yes.
And, and I'm finished after this. I would submit that if the town of Smithtown did not take the initiative to put $72 million into that mall, that today, Lake Grove would be deficient in those entire tax ratables, because that mall would have been boarded up like years ago in Huntington 110. No one was going there. It was, it was a boarded up standalone sterns. There were all five and 10 cent type businesses going in. I submit, I don't build malls, probably would have went out of business, so Lake Grove, we are, we are in a spirit of cooperation with them, that's all. Just that I don't particularly care for projects being held up based on whether or not they're gonna give us the approval or not on our end, because then the applicant that comes in decides, look, I'm not gonna wait any longer, and then they leave.
But they're, but they're not giving approval to us. They're giving the approval to the developer.
To the developer, correct.
And Frank, and Bob hit it, it's a courteous, a matter of courtesy. Doesn't affect it one way or the other.
How long does that process take? If we were to say, okay, let's put it on and then go through the village and town.
Well, what I was basically gonna, because it appeared, I wanted this done before we got the site plan approval, but at this particular juncture, since I'm willing to sign off on the site plan with saying, going to the village and just putting the matter entirely within their hands, and not just saying, okay, it's now it's your question, that's basically what I wanted to say.
Okay.
That's how I wanted to approach it. I wanted to settle this before the site plans, things, but it appears we're too far along in the process at this point. But I, I still believe the village, it should have a say-so in it and we should work with them on this particular matter. I think, because we're gonna have other changes at the mall and I think we're gonna.
But they had to say so regardless, Frank. They had to say so regardless.
Well, I think what they're, are thinking that we're going to approve this and they're going to be in a battle with them.
With Simon.
With Simon, yeah.
You know, but courtesy is a very important thing, but what we're essentially doing is adding another layer in here with us going along and saying to them, we're gonna give you all you want and you then take it from there. That just adds another layer into everything, we shouldn't do it, I don't think we should do it. We should be courteous. We are courteous. We have done what we're supposed to do and we should not add another step in.
Realistically, what they're doing, it's creating a stalling factor, so, and that's what it's doing. Let's just call it really what it is.
And it also sets a precedent.
They want us to stall it, they don't wanna stall it, they want us to stall it. I'm not willing to stall it. You bring me today, I'm signing it. If that's what's proper. It meets all our criteria, it's gonna be the easy, and now let the Suffolk County Board of Health. Let me finish. Make the decision that it meets the, the sewage treatment, meets it or doesn't meet it. Like I said before, the town, the villages, none of us should be involved in this. Suffolk County Board of Health, like I said, is a 10-ton gorilla out there, they monitor it pretty well. Let them do their job and the towns and the villages should stay out of Suffolk County Board of Health's jurisdiction.
But it doesn't stall anything.
If we don't sign it, it does. It goes nowhere.
No, he says we'll approve the site plan.
With the condition.
With a condition which they need anyway.
Yes. The question is, is what do you want to put the condition on?
They need it anyway. They need the approval to do, to build out.
My, if, if there's a question with regard to the condition, it's one of, I feel it's an appearance of good faith. Mr., Bob, one of the things I disagree with you on is in terms of the layers, is, if this site was entirely physically within the town of Smithtown, if the Smith Haven Mall is entirely, then it's our call, the town's call. This is a site which is split between two jurisdictions, have been, that's why it's called Smith Haven, Smithtown and Brookhaven, that's why it's called the Smith Haven, in which we've always exercised joint review over this particular site. It's a unique item, you know, in terms of this. We have a shopping center that's located where the Circuit City used to be, that one's closed. That's entirely within the town of Smithtown. We don't, we, uh, give notification to the village of Lake Grove, we take care of whatever happens in that. They have a shopping center where the Toys R Us are, that's entirely within their jurisdiction. They send us notification, we don't do anything with regard to that. The Smith Haven Mall, however, sits in between both jurisdictions, and a joint review has always been there. I've given counsel an article from, uh, New York Zoning Law and Practice on, um, on sites that are split and between two jurisdictions. And while there are legal issues that support what John has said, and I'm not disagreeing with John, it also says in there, there's a paragraph, that when you have a split site, it is recommended that you do a joint review.
But we're not even really talking about joint review, because our review is completed, the town board can approve the site plan. The question is, whether you put a condition on the site plan that says you have to obtain village of Lake Grove approvals. That's the condition. And the, the response to that is, they have to do it anyway, whether you put the condition on or not, the review for the town purposes is complete, right Frank? Once the site plan's signed, our review is complete.
Yes.
And they're not getting a building permit from our building department, so it says Suffolk County Board of Health's on there.
Correct.
I mean, so, I mean, what are we talking about here? There's no reason to put anything on it.
But you could look at it-
And there's no reason not to put it on.
But you could look at it from both sides, it is, it's, it's of no consequence, because-
It's of no consequence.
Your town, we have to do what's obvious, it's like when we put in an agreement that you must comply with all applicable provisions of the town code and town law. They have to do it anyhow, you put it in there so they, if they say, "I didn't know," then you can say, "No, it's in the agreement."
Doing it or not doing it doesn't make any slower or any faster, they still need the-
That's how I see it, yeah. But I just think-
Okay, so it's a town board decision, when you make it, you make it.
It's really about setting a precedent going forward, that's what it's about, I think.
But they have a right, how many, what's the, 40,000 feet now?
What's a thousand feet, but the site is split, so the-
Oh, it's because it's a split site, not the thousand feet.
Yeah, mhm.
All right, next matter.
Oh, just, Mr. Supervisor.
Yeah.
Um, members of the board, there is, on the agenda today is, um, Public hearing number three. It's the town board to consider the amendment to 322 for special exception uses. That's the end of the film station. Just briefly, the, the board knows there's, um, litigation going on, and-
We're gonna move to table.
I was gonna make the recommendation that the board move to table that.
All right, okay.
Okay.
Just, um-
Sounds good.
Go ahead, next. We got, um, I think we got three litigation matters here.
The litigation matter that I'm aware of right now is, um, the Jody Cardin case.
And the one of, um, Emma and Michael Cox.
Correct.
Okay, and, um-
Canoes.
Canoes is the other one. And I, I don't know if it's, um, okay, I'm okay with it. But then I'll move to go to executive session.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.